Hi, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting, September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. With that, if we could have a roll call, please.
Luther.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland. Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gens. Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Sommerfeld.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, under special recognition tonight, we have a person in the audience which I would like to um introduce to you, uh Adam, if you'd like to come up to the podium. Put your microphone on and just tell us a little bit about you and what you're doing here in Menominee and your new position, if you would.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Adam Accola. I am the new Director of Economic Development for Dunn County, formed under the partnership between the City of Menominee, Dunn County, and UW Stout. I'm very excited to be in this position. I come from a background in Eau Claire of working with startups and entrepreneurs in that ecosystem in the Chippewa Valley. Also, different events like Startup Chippewa Valley Week, which I helped expand to Menominee back in two thousand twenty-one. Um, because I feel that we are a much stronger community when we are working together rather than in silos, and I think that's exactly what this partnership exemplifies. Um, in addition to the work that I have done in the past. So I come from a background of, um, I, I have a degree in arts, and I have naturally found myself in economic development. So I'm excited to be here, providing a different perspective and an innovative approach to the econ- economic development work throughout the county. And if you need to contact me at all, my email is Accola, my last name, A C C O L A A at UW Stout dot E D U. I look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Uh, moving forward, approval of minutes. If somebody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes, you can, Ryland, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you, Chad.
Like the second Ryan's motion?
Motion made and seconded. Eh, uh, any additional comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, um, no, uh, uh, we have no, um, yeah, no public hearings. Okay, under public comments, public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. So if it's not on the agenda, we can't speak about it, but we would like to keep you to three minutes or less. Please give us your name and your address and do step up to the podium and push the microphone on.
Patrick Gallagher, uh, representing Stepping Stones Dunn County, sixteen oh two Stout Road. Uh, I'm here to speak about, uh, item F under new business being the consideration of new public investments, uh, specifically on funding that supports organizations like Stepping Stones. So, uh, in the packet that you were given, there was a lot of good information on the apparent increases in funding to programs like ours. Um, I do want to put a little bit of context to that to, you know, maybe consider during the discussion that's gonna happen today and subsequent discussions. Along those lines, um, I know that there were some comps to areas that are similar in size to Menominee, some cities. Um, one of the things when I give tours of Stepping Stones, I hear time and time again is we don't see this in every community. Um, I know that we hear similar things about the Mabel. Um, Stepping Stones and the Mabel and a lot of the organizations that are supported through this funding are really what sets this community apart from some of the cities that are on that list. The other thing that I want to mention is right now, um, there, there's quite a reduction in government support for programs like ours. In fact, we're seeing less than half of the government grants this year compared to last year, even as we've expanded our services specifically to meet real need that's in this community. I don't know if you've seen the two thousand twenty-four United Way Alice report, but that looks at two thousand twenty-two data. Alice is at su- asset limited, income constrained, employed. And basically, the way to think about that is people who are working but having a difficult time meeting their basic needs. So the United Way puts a lot of work into taking a look at what the minimum threshold is for a household size to, to meet basic needs. Fifty-one percent of Menom- many residents were below the Alice threshold in two thousand twenty-two. We've only seen need increase in the last two years. Last thing I want to do is go back to those numbers that were showed to you. Twenty-ten to two thousand twenty-four, there was a twenty-four percent increase in funding for our programs. That coincides to a thirty percent increase in city budget over that same period. Proportionally, we're seeing less of the city budget go to programs like ours and support for these many organizations that are behind me. Along those same years, there's been a forty-four percent increase in inflation. Just keep that in mind. I know I'm pushing it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, yeah, we're gonna try to keep everybody to three minutes really tight tonight, so you were six seconds over.
All right. Hi, my name is Melissa Neeland. I'm the Executive Director at the Dunn County Historical Society. Um, first, thank you, Patrick. That was incredibly eloquent. Um, and I just wanted to share a few things as well in regards to the distribution of public funds being discussed by the council. Um, firstly, I believe it is of utmost importance, continue support of life-saving organizations such as uh, Stepping Stones, Bridge to Hope. Um, these are organizations that should not be in question for funding as they are vital service to our community. And they also demonstrate the city council administration and administration's dedication to dignity and humanity. Uh, for my organization, the Dunn County Historical Society, I'd like to share that we have consistently, um, for more than seven years, been receiving five thousand dollars a year, um, which we are very grateful for. This helps us with paying for vital operational support such as our security system or, um, other monthly necessities. And I would ask that you consider to please continue that funding. However, if monetary support is not an option, I've been doing some research about how communities also support organizations like ours. Um, I'm all about finding solutions. So, uh, the City of Eau Claire, for example, supports their museum uh, by providing lawn care, snow removal, tree care. They even provide insurance for the exterior of their building, um, as well as providing city internet for their organization. These are examples of tangible ways that cities can provide, uh, organizational support for these organizations. Um, this would especially be important for the historical society, considering right in Wakanda Park, both, uh, mowing and plowing vehicles directly pass by our building every single time they are mowing and plowing. Um, we are working extremely hard to build and create lasting income from our Solar Victory Garden, which the city generously supported, reworking our sponsorship and fundraising, increasing venue rental and grant seeking. We are not sitting back and asking for help. We are all in and asking you to support us in that. I would ask you to consider all the options and ways you can demonstrate the city's support and recognition of cultural organizations that are the reason people are proud to call Menominee home. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lucas Chaste. I'm the Executive Director of the Mabel Tinter Center for the Arts, two oh five Main Street, Menominee, here to reiterate the same things that Padraig and Melissa had spoke, have already spoken about. These nonprofits which the city supports and we're ever forever grateful for is what makes Menominee a great community to live in. You know, we have wonderful facilities, wonderful nonprofits that support what we do on a daily basis, and I just want to reiterate, um, the importance and I think, um, the money given by the council and by the city, um, to keep these organizations and these nonprofits that are vital, um, to they continue to grow. Um, and continue that support. If the taxpayers can support it, the council can support it, uh, all of our hard work that we do on a daily basis supports it. That's what makes Menominee great. That's what makes people want to keep coming into our community, spend money in our community. Tourism uh, makes people want to live here. I think it's an important and vital part of Menominee. So thank you, and thanks for considering this, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Lucas.
Everybody, my name's Becca Schoenborn. I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Menominee. Um, I'm also here to talk in support of, um, public investment to nonprofit organizations. Um, like everybody said before me, I think these organizations, um, are vital to our community. These are what provide our community members a quality of life. Um, some organizations are providing food and housing, others are providing the culture and the arts, which are all pieces that go into a successful, thriving community. And I think considering eliminating those is, uh, eliminating a part of our culture in our community. And quite frankly, a lot of our nonprofit organizations might not make it through that cut. Um, our organization specifically, Downtown Menominee, puts on some of the largest community events that our uh, town offers. We're in charge of the Winter Days Parade and the Community Cookout, both of which we wouldn't without the support of the city, both financially and as far as staffing and helping us with guidance as we go through those. Um, and in addition to that, if the funding is cut from here, that funding still has to be found elsewhere for these organizations to continue. Um, I think Patrick made a really good point that fifty percent of our community is below that Alice level. That means that fifty percent of our people are below a livable amount of money, and those are not people we can ask to donate to our organization. So I think we need to keep in mind the folks that will be asking for money from publicly as well. Um, should any of these funding decisions be, uh, changed differently than they have in the past. But I will also say I'm really grateful for all the support we've gotten thus far. Our organization, um, is always super thankful for what we do get in support from you, and I hope that that continues going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Becca. Public comment is open. If anybody else would like to speak. Last call for public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment and move on with the rest of our meeting. Under new business for a award test wells for well number nine contract. Um, we've got Brandon Newt's in the audience, uh, and, uh, Dave, I'm gonna hand the microphone over to you, and if Brandon, if you want to come up and share the microphone with David, uh, maybe you can bring us up to speed. David?
Yeah, so you may recall about two months ago, we, uh, aired MSA Professional Services to start work on the well number nine project. The first step, as we mentioned at that time, was to do two test wells, uh, one in Wakanda Park and one in Fallon Park. Uh, the bids came back last Tuesday, um, and C T W Corporation was the low bidder, uh, on any permutation. Uh, there was a base bid, uh, supplemental items that we may or may not require depending on what we find under the ground, and then a bid alternate to speed up completion from May first to March first. Um, we are recommending award in the amount, uh, of all of those base bid supplemental and bid alternate in the amount of, uh, three hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars.
Okay. Brandon, in your words, are we, uh, are we needing this well?
Uh, greatly years ago.
Years ago.
Yeah.
Okay. And what's your involvement in the city? Maybe you can just bring the council up to speed.
Well, it started, uh, in two thousand eight seasonal, worked my way up, got full time in, uh, twenty twelve and been there ever since, uh. Worked my way up to form in the water department, and here we are today.
Great, great. So, um, how much oversight does the water department have when it comes to these wells being put in? I mean, is your involvement day to day, I guess, is me my question?
I would say more week to week. I mean, we have meetings and more involved than I thought I would be. It's nice to have a say in actually what's going on a little bit, you know, because we're the plant operators trying to get people in Menominee, nice, clean water.
Right, right, right.
Yep.
Um, how many wells do we have right now?
Right now, we have three high capacity wells.
Okay, and water towers?
Uh, three also.
So do you think that the wells are sufficient without adding water towers?
Storage is all right. We need, uh, actual water out of the ground.
We need the water pressure capacity.
We need, uh, water come out of the ground.
Cool. Right, well, I wanted to hear that from you because Dave, he's, that's exactly the same thing he says, but it's nice to have the same words come from a second, uh, second voice. So thank you for being here tonight and introducing yourself. Appreciate it. Anything? Okay, David, continue.
Uh, yeah, so the, the two test wells are six inch diameter test wells. The one in, um, Wakanda Park will be four hundred and five feet deep, and the one in Fallon Park will be four hundred and fifty-five feet deep. Um, that's considerably deeper than a, than a private well that you would see at a, you know, a house or a cabin. Um, those are probably closer to hundred to a hundred and fifty feet deep and, and probably a smaller bore, bore hole. Um, so if you've, if you built a, uh, a well recently, this is probably more than you were anticipating to see, but we are going fairly deep because we want to, we, we need to know what, what that whole column looks like, uh, to see where we want to pull the water from.
How many gallons a minute can be pumped out of one of these wells, do you think?
Uh, so our existing wells all range from around, uh, let's say, seven hundred G P M to around a thousand G P M. We're hoping that we'll be in that same range for this.
Okay, good. Thank you for the information. Um, any questions for David? Otherwise, if anybody would like to entertain a motion, Chad?
How, how important is the early substantial completion?
So the schedule that MSA put together shows an application for C D B G funding in, um, May or June, I can't recall which, next year. And so getting the test wells, all the, the reporting done at the beginning of May and then turning around with a design for the well, for the final well within, uh, a month or two is, is pretty tight. Uh, we, we left it that way. We, we left it as open as possible just to make sure we got bidders. We didn't want to make it. You know, let's say we put it in there as, uh, November first, and we get zero bidders. We don't want to scare people off, so we left it as as open as we could to try to make sure that we got some bidders, and then we provided the bid alternate for those that could do it a little quicker.
It's great, Ryland.
Uh, what kind of information do you get from doing a test well that you don't have just from like the, you know, the maps and so on that you already have? Because I assume you pick these locations for a good reason.
Yep.
Um, so what, like, what are you looking for in the two different spots that you don't have?
So we'll, we'll directly test the amount, the amount of water that we can pull out of the ground. It's called the system, uh, specific capacity of, of groundwater. So how fast that we can pull that water out and then how fast that the groundwater can recover? Because if we, if we can pull it out real fast, but we drain it all the way down to the pump, that doesn't do us a whole lot of good because we're gonna want to use this on a day-to-day basis. We can also test the water quality, and, and the way that it's set up will actually be doing that at two different levels. So we'll pump, we'll test pump it at a deep level, and then we'll, we'll do what's called a packer test, where we actually seal off a portion of the well, and then we'll test it at a different elevation so that we can kind of figure out where in the formation we want our final well to sit. Um, and then we'll, um, and then we'll get a lot of information from that water in terms of, you know, what we would see for uh, radon and, um, magnesium and iron, and that really directs how the, the treatment process is designed. We can get information on some of them from nearby wells, but as I mentioned, our residential wells are usually fairly shallow, and so the information that we get from a hundred foot deep well when we're designing a four hundred foot deep well isn't, isn't necessarily as helpful.
Because what is the, so these are a six inch pipe that you're pumping water out?
Yes.
What is the end? Because I assume that the test wells are smaller than what would the water department would use?
Yeah, so the, the final wells, if, if you look at our existing wells, um, our existing wells range from twelve inch, uh, diameter to twenty-four inch diameter. So, uh, this is considerably smaller than the final well. And, and just to be clear, we do, we do a casing pipe, um, through the, kind of the soft soils. We don't want the sand and gravel kind of falling through. But once we get into the harder, um, the harder limestone and sandstone, then we can stop the casing pipe, and then it's just an open bore hole, and that's what the rest of ours are, is an open bore hole at depth.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for David? Otherwise, if anybody would like to make a motion, you can do so at this time. I think it's an important step, and it's really, uh, needed by the city, and without this further step, we don't go anywhere with it. So Jeff Luther?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to award the contract to C T W Corporation for the test rolls for well number nine, including the base bid, supplemental items, and build bid alternative at the cost of three hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars.
Hey, good motion, Ben. Thank you. Good motion. Go ahead, Matthew.
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please. Oh, wait, Chad, go ahead.
I just, we have to have the, the some early substantial completion?
I would greatly prefer it. I think the cost was twelve thousand dollars. So I think that is, that is well worth it to have some additional time with that design before it's submitted for the grant application.
Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Luther.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Yanko.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Sommerfeld.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That moves us down onto four B agreement with West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission for update of Menominee Sewer Service Area Plan. Mr. Schofield, can you bring us up to speed on that, please?
Yeah, so, uh, in your packet and on the screen as well, I have an excerpt of our existing sanitary sewer service area plan. It, it appears to be in, in white. It's actually a blueprint. Uh, that's how old this plan is. It was from nineteen, I think it was finalized in May of nineteen ninety-three, I believe. Um, the plan sets forth the areas that the city can serve for sanitary sewer. Uh, there are some areas that back in nineteen ninety-two seemed like a long ways off, and, and we're now right to the edge of. So, you know, for instance, um, if I were to zoom in here. Um, so this right here is County Highway B. This whole stretch, and we are right up to County Highway B, and we have sewer and water to the corner of six fifty and the, and the corner of, um, B and three M Drive. So in order to, uh, provide service outside of this area, we have to do what's called a sanitary sewer service, uh, plan amendment. West Wisconsin Regional Planning applied on our behalf for a D N R grant to do this. This, these are D N R plans that we kind of participate in. Um, they applied on our behalf, and we actually are partnering with the City of Hudson because they also have uh, some development pressure that is getting towards the edge of their plan. Um, we received a grant, um, and we're requesting your approval for, uh, a cost of nine thousand dollars to complete our portion of the plan. It'll be done by the end of two thousand twenty-five.
Great, thank you. Can, um, did you explain a little bit about the grant monies? How much, how much dollars in value?
Yeah, I believe the overall cost was sixty thousand, if I recall correctly. Um, and our share was nine thousand. I don't recall what Hudson's share was, although I, I suspect that it was approximately the same, so. Uh, I'm not gonna do. Yeah, we, we got a substantial amount of it covered by the D N R.
Good job. Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions for David? Anybody like to support this with a motion? You can do so at this time.
A question?
Yes, Laura.
So it, it's the cit- commission has collaborated with the city to acquire twenty-three thousand, six hundred in the bipartisan infrastructure law, so we're getting twenty, almost twenty-four thousand, and we're paying nine thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a pretty good deal.
So again, if anybody would like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Matthew, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with, uh, West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission for the update of the Menominee Sewer Service Area Plan.
Thank you. Go ahead, Gretchen.
I'll second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Crowe.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Yanko.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Sommerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yeah.
Thank you. That moves us down to four C, Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen to support the two thousand twenty-five urban forestry grant application. Uh, Megan is here this evening. If you could take the microphone, Megan, and bring us up to speed, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet is a draft application, um, for the Hudson D N R Urban Forestry Grant. You'll recall, over the summer, we applied for a, a different urban forestry grant from the Inflation Reduction Act. Unfortunately, we were not funded, um, through that process. Um, so the Urban Forestry Board, um, we took the project that we submitted, um, for that grant application, scaled it down a little bit, and changed a few things up based on some of the feedback we received from the D N R on our previous application. So one of the things that they really want to focus on is not only tree planting projects, but capacity building, um, in the community to do urban forestry work. So focusing on staff training, having additional staff that have knowledge to do the tree trimming, the removals, tree management, et cetera. So we're continuing with tree planting. We'll be planting, uh, proposing to plant sixty-two to three inch caliper trees. Um, and then doing a lot of staff training, asking for some dollars for staff to go to E H A P training, which is an electrical training, so you can work within ten feet of any energized wires or communication wires. Um, having staff training for, uh, chainsaw, safety, tree trimming, for structural pruning, et cetera. Have twelve staff attend that, and then the D N R offers every three years the Community Tree Management Institute. Um, it's like a forty-hour training. There's like three, three separate, uh, blocks of time that you go to do in-person training. So sending one or two staff to that training as part of that. The other big thing that they're really looking at is what impacts you can have on private property, um, and the urban forest, uh, canopy for that. With Emerald Ash Borre affecting not only our city trees, but obviously trees in people's yards. Um, one of the things we're getting a lot of calls now is people one thing, I have a dead tree in my yard. Will you come cut it down? Well, oftentimes, it's, it's a private tree. It's not a public tree. So we're trying to offer resources over the phone of, you know, services you could hire or, um, things like that. So creating some sort of flyer that would have listings of here, like outfits in town that would do tree trimming, tree removal, places that you can purchase trees or rent, um, tree planting equipment if you want to do it yourself, um, building kind of a resource directory for residents to be able to find that information, and then hopefully kind of create some efficiency and, um, self-serve, uh, opportunities on our website, um, for folks to find that information. So the total project cost would come to just over, um, forty-five thousand dollars. It's a fifty percent match for the, the D N R grant. So the grant request would be twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, and the city's share would be twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Of that, a substantial portion of that would be in-kind, uh, city labor and equipment. That would be just under seventeen thousand dollars, and then just under six thousand dollars would be our final, final outlay should we be, uh, funded for this project. So looking for your council to support the resolution that's in your packet, allowing me to submit the grant, and then if we get it, sign the grant agreements and do the reporting and all of that. With that, I'd, uh, ask any questions.
When does this happen?
The grant?
No, the timeline, yes.
So the grant is due October first, and then we'll find out probably in November, early December. And then grant agreements would be signed in December, and the project period would start January first. It would go for the calendar year of two thousand twenty-five.
Hmm, okay. No, it's a great idea. Okay, Council, if you have any questions for Megan, you can ask them now, or if somebody would like to support this with a motion, or Gretchen, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eighteen, authorizing staff to submit the D N R Urban Forestry Grant application as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second, Mary?
I would second Gretchen's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Or Matthew?
Got a quick question for, uh, Megan. Um, is the purpose for this just to get more tree coverage to kind of help, you know, with more shade and to help the buildings cool off a bit and help with their utilities? Is there a return there? Is that kind of the main purpose of this?
Yeah, and mostly to replace the tree canopy we've lost. So last winter, um, with the lack of snow, our, our crews were able to cut down over four hundred trees. Um, and our annual forestry budget allows, we have sixty-five trees in our gravel bed to replace. It's a pretty meager replacement rate, so trying to just up the physical number of trees we're planting, and then we plant bare root inch and a quarter caliper trees, so trying to get a little bit more substantial of a tree to help promote survivability and building that canopy a little quicker.
So, so Megan, four hundred trees, were those really good trees or the dying trees or diseased trees or?
They were all dying or diseased trees. Primarily ash. I think like three hundred and eighty or more were ash.
Mary?
So Megan, I know we're a tree city. Um, are we below our canopy?
Threshold?
Threshold for being a tree city?
So there's not necessarily a, a certain threshold for tree city. There's a variety of like actions that you have to have. So one is including like having an urban forestry board, um, having a tree ordinance. Things like that get us kind of the, it's a point system. Basically, you have to get a certain number of points to be a, a tree city. So there's a variety of things you can earn points. Um, one is the budget you spend on urban forestry, um, activities, what that is per capita. Um, so that's one of the qualifiers. Um, but yes, we, we don't want to continue cutting down four hundred trees and only planting sixty-five back. So I mean, it's gonna take a substantial investment in both financial resources and time to replant these trees and grow our canopy back. Um, one thing we are doing and that, um, have been doing for several years now is planting a wide variety of tree species, so we hopefully don't end up in another Dutch elm disease, Emerald Ash Borre. Dutch elm disease, Emerald Ash Borre. It'll be terrible for the maple blight of twenty forty that'll probably come. But once we get through that, we should, with planting a more diverse tree species, we shouldn't have these huge, huge outbreaks that result in lots of trees getting cut down in a very short amount of time.
Okay, good. Thank you. Go ahead, Ryland.
I know that the Parks Department switched to the doing the gravel bed to grow their own replacement trees as a cost-saving measure. Has that actually ended up saving money? And can that be expanded or, you know, instead of it sounds like, you know, a three-inch diameter trunk tree is probably not cheap to buy?
Yeah.
So do we have the resources to expand that program?
So we just expanded that program in twenty twenty-three. We had a smaller gravel bed nursery that was out at our solid waste site that could hold about twenty, twenty-five trees, depending on the species. We expanded, moved that up to our park maintenance building in Wakanda Park and it can hold. We're at, we have sixty-five trees in there now. Last year we had eighty-five in there and they grew, their roots grew so well, they grew into each other and got really, really difficult to get out. The guys had to take like crowbars to get them out. So we're thinking sixty-five or seventy is probably closer to what the capacity is. So for that, like, we're kind of at capacity now with that increased capacity. And they are cheaper, certainly. We do have higher incidence of vandalism and deer browsing and things like that with the smaller trees. The wholesale price for the two to three-inch caliber trees is more, but it's, it's still relatively reasonable in the whole scope of things. And one of the things with the DNR grant, they are really trying to figure out or trying to fund projects that aren't the regular, your regular forestry program. So that was one of the distinctions we kind of made, like, well, we don't normally plant these larger trees. So that's one of the distinctions we kind of made in our application to hopefully score smart points for funding.
Okay, Megan, any other questions for Megan? Awesome, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, I believe. And that being money involved, we'll have to have a roll call vote. So roll call vote, please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Bianco?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to four D, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, and ordinance amending the title of section five two four of the city code and amending section five two four C of the city code to include a probate, a prohibited, a prohibition of students possessing vaping devices on school grounds and at school events. Okay, this is an ordinance. So we would need somebody to introduce the ordinance. Before we get to that point, Commander King is here. Talk a little bit about this and the happenings around it. So Commander, if you'd come up to the microphone, please.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. As you probably could see in your documents that you received, there's a little bit of a loophole in our ordinance right now. So right now at the high school, I would say most schools were no different, have a significant issue with vaping in our schools and possessing those vapes. Well, currently now an eighteen-year-old or even a nineteen-year-old student at our high school could technically possess a vape by statute or by no, they wouldn't be in violation of the ordinance. So obviously that has occurred and that's why it's being brought to your attention tonight to consider adding this prohibition into the ordinance.
Any questions for Commander King? Ryland?
I guess if they can legally have it, what is the reason for saying you can't have this thing that's?
Sure. Well, obviously in a school setting, you'd have a lot of access to underage students who shouldn't have it. And that's obviously a concern. And with the amount of vaping, possession of vapes that are, are YSOs deal with at the schools, they feel that it's an issue that needs to be resolved. I know when I was a YSO at the high school, these were just coming into, we were just starting to see them and now they've really blown up to be a considerable problem in many schools around, not just ours. So.
So would this cover parents and teachers then as well?
It does not, just students. I, then you start getting into enforcing stuff at any events, whether it be a band concert, a football game. If somebody has a can of chew in their pocket and they're fifty-some years old and they're not using it. We, I think that was a consideration. It was just, we weren't making that leap yet. We want to try and keep the vapes away from underage students in the schools.
One thing to add to this too, I think, is Allison Moore and Ben Ludeman helped to draft this and it kind of contained it in such a fashion that it doesn't overobligate any of those individuals involved. But it does offer a safe zone for the underage people, being that a lot of times it, there's a mix between that eighteen-year-old and underage people. I know that is, is I hung out with the under, the older classmen back in my day. Ben, do you have anything to add to that?
No, Mr. Mayor, just that, like you said, worked with the prosecutor, Allison Moore on this for the city. And this is what she requested going forward. We did check with the police chief as well, who is in favor of the proposed changes.
Okay, thank you. Anything to add to that, Commander?
No, I just think the, the biggest issue that we're seeing is we're seeing obviously a lot of possession, but we're seeing the sale of vapes in the school too. So if somebody's able to possess them legally and then bring them into the school, I think that's problematic. Not only for our youth, but just to keep general order in the school because they're dealing with a lot of smoking in the bathrooms. They've looked into vape detectors in the bathrooms and stuff too, and those are very costly. So I know, I know it's a problem that needs to be addressed.
Go ahead, Matthew.
What's the law in the state of Wisconsin? Is it that you can't sell it to them if they're twenty-one or?
Correct. So most people refer, they probably remember, I think it was two thousand and nineteen, that was a federal law. So you can't sell it in Wisconsin to eighteen-year-olds, I think is my understanding. Ben, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but the federal law is the one that people refer to as the twenty-one, you know, and you need to be twenty-one to reference those. I don't think Wisconsin's laws really changed that much since that federal law went through.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this being an ordinance, if anybody would like to introduce this, you could do so at this time and then we'll move it forward after that. So I think that the, you know, it is what it is. I think we are in a kind of a position where we almost need to support something like this. Just because it is, you know, a situation within our schools. So with that, I would offer it up if anybody would like to make a motion or I mean, anybody would like to introduce this, we can do that at this time. Mary?
I would like to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, amending the title of section five dash two dash four and amending section five dash two dash four dash C to include prohibition of students possessing vaping devices on school grounds and at school events.
Okay, good motion, Ben, or good introduction, I'm sorry. Okay, now we need a motion to waive the first reading. If somebody would like to make that, we can do so at this time. Anybody like to make a motion to waive the first reading? Jeff Luther?
I'll make a motion and waive the first reading.
Is there a second to that? Laura?
Second to that motion?
Motion to waive the first reading and a second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then we'll need a motion to waive the second reading as well. Somebody like to make a motion, Lee?
I'll make a motion and waiving this second reading of the change in the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second to Lee's motion? Randy?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to waive their second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. And now we need a motion to adopt. Mary, would you like the motion to adopt?
I would make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, amending the title of section five dash two dash four and amending section five dash two dash four dash C to include prohibition of students possessing vaping devices on school grounds and at school events.
Okay, go ahead, Matthew.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to adopt said ordinance. Any additional discussion? Go ahead. Did you have something, Eric? No, we're good. Nope. Okay, so that being said, additional discussion? And a roll call vote. Do we need a roll call? Nope. Okay, just a regular vote then. All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Moving on to the next one. That brings us down to four E. Proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, and ordinance repealing section ten three one C of the city code to eliminate protests against zoning amendments. It's kind of an interesting one. I'm going to turn it over to Ben. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor stated, our current zoning ordinance has a protest against amendment. Where basically owners of twenty percent or more of the areas of land included in a proposed zoning amendment and sign a petition that would increase the vote required from a simple majority to a three-fourths vote. There has been some law changes that have gone into effect. There is a zoning FAQ from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities in your packet indicating that ordinances such as this one are no longer enforceable due to the law change. And so David Schofield and I were discussing this and we just we figured it would be a good idea to remove it. So constituents wouldn't get confused if they do read it within the ordinance. So just cleaning up the zoning code. As this is a zoning code matter, it would need to be introduced at today's meeting. And instead of going through the waivers and adopting, it would need to be referred to plan commission. There would be a public hearing that would be required on it as it is a zoning amendment and it would come back for council for final action.
Okay, thank you. Glad you said all that. So in other words, all we need to do really tonight is if somebody would introduce this and, and then we can move it forward to move it on to plan commission. So if somebody would like to introduce this, we can do that at this time. Matthew?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four more dash fifteen, and ordinance repealing section ten dash three dash one dash C.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Oh, no, that's introduction. I'm sorry. But we will need a motion also to move it on to plan commission, correct? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we're going to need another, thank you for the introduction. Now we're going to need a motion to move it on to plan commission. So Laura?
I would. Do we need to wave or do we just send it?
Because we need to bring it back. It's going to be, it's a little different than written.
Okay.
Tonight, we had another conversation after the packet.
Packet went out, yeah.
Packet went out. We decided to do a plan commission review this way. So.
So I would like to move to send this to plan commission.
There you go. Thank you for the motion. Is there a second, Jeff?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to send this through to plan commission. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, thank you. Okay, moving forward to four F, which is future public investments. Eric, I'm going to hand this off to you, please.
Yeah, so we're coming into a second time for me running the recommended budget draft for city council to consider for twenty twenty-five. And as we're looking at the twenty twenty-five budget, I'm looking for some direction on what you would like to do with our public investments and in particular as they relate to subsidy requests. So we have some uncertain future in areas of shared revenue. The expenditure restraint program has changed over the years and as well as the elimination of the personal property taxes as adjusted with the amount of revenues that we can bring in as a city to be able to tackle general operations in our, our normal budget. And so as we're looking at coming into this fall here and reviewing our twenty twenty-five draft budget before it comes to you, I'd like to get a sense of direction of how you would like me to proceed for recommendations as it relates to subsidies. In the past, the administration has presented subsidy requests in the form of the subsidies that were actually requested, what those dollar amounts were. And then the recommendations. And then there was a discussion during a normal subsidy hearing and you have many of the people that have been there at those hearings are here tonight. In order to try to get an understanding as to what we've done as a city over the last ten, fifteen years, we compiled the list as to how much we have expended during that time, going back to two thousand and ten, all the way through to last year. We also asked for a survey of what other communities are doing as well. And you have, you're having it pulled up on the screen to see what cities that are similar in size and some are providing some subsidies and some are not. But what I'm more concerned about is what we are doing here and what you would like me to do for those recommendations is we're trying to be able to compile a budget that works for our community. And that's where we wanted to bring this here forward to have an open discussion about this because certainly the charities and the nonprofits that we do provide subsidies to are all great organizations. This is real tax money that we're investing in. And, and I would like your direction as to where you would like to go as we move forward, both not only this year, but in years to come.
Okay, and so this can be a, a conversation held in the next couple of weeks. You know, it's just for, for you to review. Think about a couple of interesting things I thought is Padraig made some good points, of course, and, and as Eric had stated, all these organizations are amazing organizations. When I had talked to different mayors of different cities, you know, they do do some in-kind things, but they don't do a lot of actual money donations to their, to their charities and so forth. I guess the thing that struck me a little bit was this year's budget is going to have some, some shortfalls in the areas that Eric had spoke about, you know, the budget restraint process. What's it called?
The Expenditure Restraint Program.
Exactly. And, you know, that's, that's real money. So when we look at a total of three and a half million dollars that's been distributed from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-four, if there's anything, any, any way to be able to shave some of these, maybe not eliminate, but if there's shavings and savings to be had, then it's something to be considered. And with that, I'll turn the microphone back over to Eric to elaborate a little bit more on this. Eric?
Yeah, so, so thank you, Mayor. That, that's what I'm looking at from, from this body is to see what kind of direction that you would like to take. We certainly can proceed as we have done in the past. But if you're looking for ways to try to address budget shortfalls or wanting to do something unique like what Ms. Nealon had mentioned about in-kind work, I think that's, this is a time for that kind of discussion. And then we can talk about that, of course, too, when we have the actual subsidy meeting where we have the hearing and those organizations present their case for distribution of potential funds.
Okay, one of the ideas that we had knocked around in Eric's office was, well, instead of just doing these monies for subsidy requests, what if we took that pool of money and placed it in our?
You could, you could have it in like the, like a contingency fund.
Thank you.
And then create a, like a grant program.
Exactly. So what it does do is it allows us to be able to isolate these monies a little bit longer and have a real feel for how they're being doled out. Sometimes what happens is we get ourselves stuck where we only have a certain amount in our contingency fund and we don't, we run out of money. So if we have two hundred thousand dollars in our contingency fund and we only need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well, we're shortfalling ourselves. But at the end of the year, we say, hey, we have fifty thousand dollars extra, a hundred thousand dollars extra. Maybe that's the time we look at some of these subsidies. I know that's a little different way of doing it. But we are looking at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars shortfall this year from monies coming in and estate revenues. They haven't come up with those numbers yet. So we're a quarter million dollars short and we're looking at ways that maybe we can fulfill all the needs of the subsidies and of the city. But that might be a different formula than what you're used to. That being said, I would open the floor for any dialogue. We are a little bit limited on what we can say and how we can say it. However, if there's a formula that we think, you know, if it's a certain way that you'd like to handle this this year, that would help Eric out in the budgeting process. So I would offer the floor up. Eric, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I, I think you, you said it well. One, one of the other things that to be considered is we're going to see in our shared revenues adjusting the way that that's done through sales tax, through recent law changes. So we're, we know that that's going to adjust and it may not be a typical number that we have seen in the past from the states. So that's still a little bit on, a little bit new for us. I think market uncertainty is something also that we're taking a look at. We're in the middle of an election, a national election cycle. And the markets will tend to fluctuate when you have a new president that's, that's elected. And, and I realize that's out of everybody's control. It just ends up being one of the things that you have to take into consideration along with our own inflationary costs. And we know what set labor is going to be in general because of contracts that we have in place. So So this is to try to help me present the best possible draft to you. So you can make decisions that are informed.
That was well said. Thank you, Gretchen.
It was alluded to, but I just popped the 2010, 197,000 into the inflation calculator and that would be 284,000 right now. So as it was stated, we've done a lot of reduction just in, I mean, it looks like the numbers are increasing, but they really are reducing over the years. So we have been cutting out. It's not, none of it was fluff, but we've been really honing. And and keeping our priorities straight, I think. And I think we've done a good job up to until now. And part of the reason we're subsidizing a lot of those organizations is because we recognize how valuable they are to nominees like essence and who we are. I'm I have a question about the the city comparisons and they may not be giving subsidies. But I was, I'm wondering if if it was reviewed comparable organizations and how the city supports those organizations. I mean, they may not have it labeled as a subsidy and it might not be straight funding. But how much was delved into the other city budgets and what they're doing with their community?
Yeah, it's a it's a great question, Gretchen. So to touch on that, so yes, you see like Stevens Point. And Chippewa Falls listed as like a subsidy or a public investment. And then you see a couple of the asterisks as it relates to Hudson and Rice Lake. So the the Hudson dollar amount on that, they're utilizing a room tax tourism dollars to be able to fund their local cemetery. Their cemetery was in jeopardy of being absorbed by the city and they utilize those funds to help keep that afloat. As far as the exact dollar amount, I don't have the exact dollar amount on that. So I can't, I don't want to tell you a number and then it'd be way off. Rice Lake was was also using tourism dollars for several organizations to the tune of about $125,000 that they were giving up with those room tax dollars.
Just a follow up creativity wise. We may need some space to plant some trees and I believe near Wakanda, there's a some land next to a building that might be available to counterbalance in kind. Just a thought.
Well, I think this is, this is why to have that discussion. Are there other options that we can find a way to help? Because I like all personally, I like all these organizations. Some of them might even been a board member of them. But it's important to have this talk. Thank you.
Well, and the flip side of this too, you know, there's we give to a certain number of organizations, there's again, a number of organizations that we don't give to. And and I know that sometimes they feel a little slighted, even though, you know, they have to fill out the form and they have to come forth and so forth. So I'm sure that this would be a drop in the bucket. Last year was was $245,000. You know, it could probably be a million dollars that we could give out to the local organizations and it still wouldn't be enough. But I guess where I'm going with this is what would this council or this body feel comfortable with? And and a direction for Eric to take to to do the budget cycle coming up in the near future. And that's what we we want you to be thinking about in the next weeks to come. We don't need to do anything with this tonight, other than it's planting the seed to be thinking about, hey, oh, I just had a brainstorm. I should call Eric and tell him what I'm thinking. And and that's what the baseline of this discussion really is tonight. It's not that any organizations aren't worthy. They are, but we want you to be thinking about this ahead of time. So Lee.
All right, I have a question both on Rice Lake and and Hudson. If you know the answer, I thought the room tax collected had to go to for tourism. And I see Hudson is using it to subsidize a cemetery.
How do they do that?
Yeah, they do that. And the same with Rice Lake. Well, that's probably more, maybe a little bit more understandable because it's for grants. But particularly Hudson with the cemetery.
Seventy five percent.
Well, I can't, I can't remember the exact dollars on there. But the Hudson utilizes and they they have a new administrator now. It's been on for a couple of months. But for for those who don't know, I used to work in that that city. I've been here for over 12 years. But but in the early mid 2000s, that city struggled with one of its cemetery, an old cemetery. And in that cemetery needed money and funds. It it had a variety of different events that they coordinated taking place where they were doing like historical. While they had like deceased residents of the cemetery and they had actors playing those folks as part of a historical thing with their local historical society. And I believe our evergreen one has done that before too in the past. And so what they did is they would host a variety of different educational events in there to attract people to come. And because if they're using tourism dollars, you have to do something that brings in tourism. And they were using that as a mechanism to bring in awareness and tourism to the historical cemetery. So they're they're being unique, using the statutory qualifications for tourism dollars to help fund that cemetery to keep it from having to be absorbed into a city service.
I believe it's 75%. The money has to be spent for tourism. Other 25% comes to the city. The city can dole with what they want with those dollars.
So to speak to speak to that, and I'm sorry, I misunderstood you earlier, Mayor. If when you look at our budget on our revenue page, you'll see our tourism budget is approximately $150,000 comes in on revenue side. And right now we utilize those tourism dollars into our general fund that come in, our portion of that tourism dollars into our general fund to offset other costs.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like, unless there's any other discussion on this piece, I would like to move ahead, but go ahead, Laura.
Just two thoughts. Could we change the form if we continue with the subsidy form? Could we change the form to include if we can't give you money, what in kind could you ask for? And also, is it time for us to consider a room tax? I don't know what that would do or how that would work, but is it something we should consider?
Well, right now, the tax that somebody would pay with they were to rent a hotel room, that extra tax is seven percent, I think it is, or near there. That that comes through and that supports the tourism dollars with a certain percentage coming to the city. So there is a room tax.
Okay.
Already.
And that that so the sales tax and a room tax are separate and part of that 150,000 that comes in from tourism.
Is all room tax.
Part of that room tax already.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And we don't collect, we don't receive the sales tax. We will get in a way, sales tax from the way shared revenue is now going to be computed from the state.
Right, if, but I understand the half percent sales tax that the county gets is close to $2 million. So if the county wanted to share some of that money, we'd be in great shape. So so talk to any.
Should I talk to someone I happen to know on the county board?
If you know of anybody that's the county chair or anything like that, cook them a good dinner and tell them that you need to share some of this tax revenue. So anyways, okay, Matthew.
Yeah, do we have any data or can we get data on what the return on investment is with these subsidies?
I think I think that becomes kind of challenging because each each subs, each subsidy provides a sort of unique service. So let's kind of use stepping stones as an as an example. Also, they utilize both food shelf and and also a shelter. And they they can produce information that says, okay, we provided this many nights or we we gave out this many pounds of food to people and help. As far as, you know, how that equates on certain matrices, it's a little bit more challenging.
How do you compare apples to apples?
Yes, or like you, let's take the maple tainer, for example. So we provide money to the maple tainer in forms of subsidy. They they provide entertainment, culture, keeping a historical theater going as far as like, can we say overall like area impact of tax, like economic dollars, it's challenging to do so. I think one of the people that came up and spoke, I'm not sure which one, had said about how it has an impact with, let's say, the culture, the fabric of a community piece. That's where where I think that you can touch on a lot of those types of subsidies. So it's it's hard to say, well, if we give money to this group, it equates to a future hundred thousand dollars and and like revenues or or tax dollars that were potentially saved. They they could argue that makes a service that we cannot provide.
Okay, good discussion piece. Be thinking about it, Chad.
I just got a real quick one. So what percentage of the funds do we have distributed this year that we might fund?
What percentage of the funds do we have this year as compared to last year?
So for the new subsidies that came in for requests.
Whatever they, based on last year's, if they all put in the same amount. No, not even that. But last year, like say, we had a quarter million dollars that we dealt out. What percentage of that do we have this year?
I for if I'm understanding the question, right, the without diving into the the whole details of it. The overall new request is going to be about 280, 285,000 if it was given out.
Do we have, so there's this bucket that exists or a pocket that has.
We paid out quarterly. Okay, I think I get you. So we would have a quarter of that left.
Like last year, we paid out $250,000, say. And we only have X amount of funds of that 250,000. What percentage of that X amount this year do we have compared to last year?
With the way the state has the financing and expenditure restraint program and so forth. By my estimates, and I'm not, this are not to the dime, but we're probably 250,000 short.
Zero?
Short. I mean, I mean, you can pull money from streets. You can pull money from water department. You can pull money from other areas. I'm just saying that for a balanced budget, Eric's going to have his hands full this year. And we're just looking at other ideas on a quarter of a million dollar expenditure.
So if I understand you correctly, you allocated last year $245,000 as a governing body to you go to subsidies. Are you asking how much money is that left to be yet distributed to the subsidy?
I'm assuming that we have this allocation bucket where we.
Oh, the the money comes from what you're willing to tax. So it comes out of operational levy. So if you're.
We don't have a given amount.
Not not necessarily. So what what will happen is, and I'm sorry, I probably should have explained this earlier. So if you have a, if you have the subsidy hearing like you you normally do and you have the request that that came in. And let's just say you gave $280,000 in in money. That's what you directed staff and the finance department to prepare for. I take that those numbers back then with me. I apply those into our our balance spreadsheet. And then I make adjustments either reducing in other departments that exist within the city. Or I look at creating alternatives that say, if you raise the mill rate to this, you're going to have X number of this amount of revenue that comes in to cover those expenses. And that so this is this is tax dollars that are coming in. So anybody who's living in the city and is paying taxes. You are being levied for those dollars to to issue out. Does that make sense?
Little bit, I guess.
Okay, in layman's terms, if I could be so bold, is we have a little over a billion dollars in taxable entity out there. So if we needed to raise $300,000, we would have to charge 30 cents per thousand per hundred, per thousand dollars of of home value. So if you've got a hundred thousand dollar home, your tax is going to go up 30 bucks, basically, to raise. If you got a $200,000, it's going to go up $60 to raise $300,000. So basically, if we're $300,000 short, it's 30 cents. If we're $500,000 shorts, it's 50 cents on a hundred thousand. On a on a thousand. It doesn't matter. I'm just saying, overall, if you were to take a chart and map out, we have a billion dollars worth of valuation. And say, hey, we need to raise $100,000, it'd be 10 cents, $1,000 added to your tax. So if 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 we can't balance the budget without deep going deep into it. Then the tax issue would come into play as we may have to raise taxes to balance the budget in layman's terms. Without getting too deep in it, because I know Ben here is looking at me funny. So.
Thank you.
He keeps us out of trouble. So one, one of the things as it relates to this with with the sub season investments, and I think it gets to your question, Chad, is that one of the things that we'll have to look at is if we want to participate in the expenditure restraint program two years from now, right now, we are, we have too low of a mill. This doesn't make a lot of sense. We have too low of a mill rate to qualify for it. So we would have to recommend raising it based on what the state formula utilizes for a mill rate. Just to qualify for extra money to show that we've been restrained in our expenditures.
Can you explain that in layman's terms?
It makes no, as the Department of Revenue told me, it makes no sense. So it, there's a formula which basically says by the state calculation, you have to have a mill rate of at least five mills. And we calculate ours for the way we levy and the way we assess. And it's different than, say, the county that works off of just equalized value. We use a combination of assessed value and equalized value. And because we do that, our mill, our mill rate is fine. And as we came back last year. This body had to raise the mill rate. But even when raising that mill rate, utilizing the state formula on the expenditure restraint form. And this is Kate and I had learned this year not too long ago that we are just short on that. Because we'd asked, how come we are not seeing our new form? And they said, well, you don't have to worry about it because you are getting paid expenditure restraint for 2025 for the for the for next year because of the Act 12 law change. But if you want to get it for 2026, you're going to have to make adjustments here and have your body consider doing that. I know it makes no, I did not understand it myself. That's why I had to speak to someone at the Department of Revenue to get it. So I, these are some of the unique challenges that are coming on. And of course, none of this is any fault to any of the the nonprofits here in town. They're just doing the best that they can with what they got. But I just want to be very transparent with the group here as you're trying to make decisions. And then you're asking me for recommendations coming forward because I want to make sure that I'm working with you and providing what you need.
Okay, thank you. That was a good discussion. It's it's complicated, but I want you to be thinking about it. Maybe there's some better ideas out there. Mary.
Eric, the room tax dollars was, I found interesting and use it in such a way. Maybe the next time we meet that we discuss this. I would be curious to know what the room tax money that was the city share, what it went to. And if we decided to use room tax for something else, like the subsidies, who would lose? In your, you know, what you've used the room tax for in the past.
So I I could tell you right right now what it would be is so we know that we will garner approximately $150,000 a year for our portion of the room tax. On that revenue sheet that you see in the overall budget that gets produced. That money goes in as an overall revenue, just like you would, we'd collect for assessed taxes, like levied taxes. And that offsets all of our our liabilities. So if you if you direct staff or like myself, okay, let's look at you like you being creative with our room tax dollars. We can do that. But then I'll have to find still another spot to make up for that loss of revenue because we use that as a as an overall fund to to offset costs, if that makes sense. So I'll give you another example that happens as a general revenue. Some of the departments will receive state funding to offset different training and whatnot. We don't want to apply those dollars directly into that operational line item budget that you will see presented for you. It'll show on that revenue side that we have collected that as a revenue. Now, in our own bookkeeping. Yeah, that money helps go towards those things, but we use that to help the general fund. So if this body says, hey, Eric, let's get creative with that room tax and do something, we can do that. Just bear in mind, though, that still equates to a potential loss for us that we would have to make up for in a levy or reduce in other areas. And I know it is, it's very challenging.
But that's why we wanted to bring you up to speed a little bit on it tonight, just so you could think about it. If you've got any brainstorms or good ideas. Please pass them along to Eric and you guys can all talk about it. But meanwhile, well, go ahead, Mary.
One quick question. Has the application for subsidy already gone out?
It has gone out and it has been received, but we still have a little bit of time left. So if if there was something that the body wanted to see, so Laura is bringing up about in kind offerings. the body wanted to see, so Laura is bringing up about in kind offerings, there's nothing stopping us from reaching out to the organizations and saying, hey, if we had to get creative, what kind of in kind work would, would you be willing to consider or for us to consider as a body? I don't think we need to shut the door on that. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
So good, a good discussion. Thank you. I'm going to keep this meeting moving though, because we've got a ways to go. So we're going to move on down to five, which is budget transfers. We've got two budget transfers tonight. We've got an airport budget transfer. We had some ARPA funds that we were going to use for some remodel, but instead we need to swap those over. And I believe they're for electrical. David Schofield is out there. Electrical updates and so forth out there. So we'd like to use that for that. And then also the fire department had some extra, I think it was fire department.
Yes.
Extra funds for some computer things. So if you guys are supportive of the budget transfers, I think one motion would allow both budget transfers. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to to do that, we could do that at this time. Laura?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two budget transfers as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to Laura's motion? Lee?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to the mayor's report. Well, it was kind of interesting this weekend. I attended the NAP hundred and fiftieth celebration, NAP celebration, and it was a lot of fun. Great parade, my gosh. And every I never, I had pockets full of candy. My gosh, I can't believe how much candy they handed out in NAP, Wisconsin. I don't think there is even a dentist in NAP, but there should be. But that being said, this weekend, Friday, or the Friday night coming up, September twentieth is the homecoming parade. And also followed by music here at Wilson Park by the Homegrown Tomatoes, I believe it's called. Is that right, Caitlin? Okay. And so that's going to be a lot of fun. So be sure to attend the homecoming parade and the homecoming events afterwards. Great fun all the way around. With that, that's all I've got. Eric?
Just a quick update on our enterprise financial system. So we've gone, we have gone live with our payroll portion of it. They're beginning their training on general ledger and then shortly after utilities. And the staff and the finance department are very excited about it. It'll not only make their job easier, it'll provide department heads with the information that they need, and it actually costs less than what we're paying for now. So there's a little bit of a cost savings there. So we're very excited about it and we'll keep you posted.
David?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A number of things in the, in the packet. We had a water main break on Stout Road adjacent to Seventeenth Street, right next to the Denny's appliance and and TV. Maybe there's no TVs there, maybe just appliances at this point. It was an old corporation stop from the old house that sat there eons ago, that that the pipe actually split. Our street department and our water department worked together and they are ready to pour the concrete, I believe tomorrow. And then we'll be putting the asphalt back on top. So it's, it's nearly complete and the repairs are nearly The Bongie Drive project will be starting on September twenty fourth, so we're going to be doing resurfacing from twenty fourth to twenty eighth. I did send a letter out to the residents and I copied the two council members that cover that area. So they were aware of what their constituents were getting from us in terms of the discussions. And then the Wilson Park sidewalk project is nearing completion. We have three of the four spokes done in the center hub. We're going to wait until after the homecoming parade and concert to do the last little bit towards the stage. I think it's turned out very well. If you're in the area and you want to go take a look at it, it it should, it should be an improvement. We are, we are contemplating if and how to move the the eagle statue to the center. Want to make sure that we don't damage the brand new concrete as we do that, but it might be kind of a nice focal point to the park. So we'll, we'll be looking at that. We do have a spot for, for two benches on the northwest corner of the park. We poured the pads for them, so closest to the blind munchies. We poured the pads for them and we could install some benches there. And then the McConna Water Park is underway. The slide is refinished and they were doing some work inside. So we're seeing good progress on that project. I think Megan's got a number of things.
Couple of things. A week from Thursday is our annual clean sweep hazardous waste collection held down at the city street department shop. They'll be from two to six P M. Open to city residents, town of Menominee residents and town of Red Cedar residents. Ten dollars a vehicle payable by cash or check for all the hazardous waste, light bulbs and batteries you want to give us. So check your basements, garage, cabinets, all the things. We'll be there for that. And then in your packet is a copy, a little infographic on the twenty twenty three Red Cedar Partnership Annual Report. This is a group of stakeholders that gets together every other month to work on water quality in the Red Cedar River watershed, which covers portions of eight counties. Menominee is at the very southern tip of the watershed. Highlights from the report. Caitlin, kudos to Caitlin for putting this together. I opened my mouth at a meeting saying it would be really nice to have a digestible version of a long report. And then I got tasked with doing that. So I recruited Caitlin to help me. So I will keep my mouth shut at meetings moving forward. But a few of the, kind of the highlights and the key takeaways from that is, over the past decade, phosphorus levels have been going down. That's measured at a monitoring station that's just below the dam here in Menominee in the river. Nitrate levels, however, have been going up in that same time period, though they have shown a little bit of a slight plateau the last couple of years. They're still worryingly high. And we have a lot of work to do, even though we have decreased the phosphorus numbers. There's still a lot of work to do across the watershed and across our partnership to get water quality cleaned up and have impacts that residents can visibly see. This is year eight of a ten year plan. So we're currently writing a grant to get assistance to write the next ten year plan that has to be approved not only by the State Department of Natural Resources, but the EPA to maintain our TMDL status. Then the last thing that was in your packet was just a snippet out of the governor's twenty twenty four Clean Energy Progress Report. The city was highlighted for some of our recent energy efficiency efforts in that report. So that's all I have.
It's a good picture. Hey, Megan. Also, I, we did get a flyer in the mail and you want to talk just a midget about that?
Yeah, so the environmental newsletter was mailed out to all city residents and businesses. Late last week should have been in your mailbox, and that had information on our clean sweep event, information about stormwater, education, recycling, information, our forestry program, and then inserts that we did with in coordination with the water department for the lead service lines is inventory was brought in front of this body a while back that they need to complete. So that is one of the things that was in there as well.
Great. I, I thought that was very well put together. Did you have help on that?
I put it together primarily by myself. I had some great proofreading skills from Caitlin and good, good help there.
Yeah, it was very well done. Thank you. Caitlin, I know, just a minute, David. David, go ahead. And then I've got Caitlin for a second.
Yeah, just with respect to the fire that went out, we do have a questionnaire in there. We've gotten a lot of folks that have submitted hard copies to us. That's entirely fine. We would prefer that folks use the electronic version because it goes directly into our maps. We don't have to edit any data. So if you're, if you're wondering which way we'd like you to do it, please do it electronically. If you really don't want to play with the, with your phone or with your computer and you like to send a hard copy, that's, that's fine, too.
And that was regarding what?
The water.
Lead pipes and so forth. Yes, thank you. Caitlin, you've done a lot of work lately on all kinds of things for the city. Can you just give an overview of some of the things that you've achieved?
Yeah, of course. So I took some little notes. So from April first to September first, which was my six month work anniversary, we've reached over five hundred thousand people through our social media pages, and that's just the city of Menominee and the Menominee Police Department page. I didn't count all the other ones because they're not as active. I also started a city Menominee Instagram in order for us to reach a different demographic of people. And we started being more active on LinkedIn as well. I partnered with the MPD to plan and promote National Night Out, which had a estimated record number of attendees at seventeen hundred people. I'm collaborating with the Dunn County Historical Society on a couple of projects for community engagement and promotion. And then I update the website as needed, working with the departments to make it more user friendly, follow plain language guidelines, and just make it more accessible overall.
I think Caitlin is being rather humble. She has completely revamped our website, made our forms accessible online to try to be able to, to help our constituents be able to do business with, with their local government. And one of the challenges we've just had over the years is just being able to have someone that is both savvy enough and has the ability to be able to maintain, keep it updated, and then make it in such a user friendly form that people want to use it. And Caitlin has done that in spades, and she's been absolutely invaluable to the city. So we're very, very, very excited for the work that she has done. She's been a real game changer. Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Great. Yeah, good work, Caitlin. I think the city in a whole has done a lot of great things. In fact, I was at a groundbreaking ceremony at Cedar Core a week or so ago, and maybe Kevin, you can touch base just a little bit as our city engineering firm. You know, what's your status on your new building?
Yeah, so we had.
Talk loud, please.
We had that, yeah, roughly about a week ago. They had a pretty good turnout over there. We did start doing the sewer and water lateral connection. And half construction is actually going to be building the, the building itself. And as of now, we're hoping for like August of next year to be actually able to move in. We're hoping for another mild winter to help out with that. But we're not hopefully it ends up being that way. So.
Good. Good work on that building. Couple of other things. I know three M, we invited out to a ribbon cutting on Thursday afternoon for the three Ms. Is it fifty years? Fifty year, our anniversary from their startup. And what was the other ribbon cutting? I think on Thursday as well, or some, oh, no, I know what it is. Moose Lodge has their, one of their senior moose people there. So I get to go to the Moose Lodge at eleven and then go right out to three M after that. So there's always something to do at the mayor's office. Tomorrow morning, there we have our seven thirty Greater Menominee Development Corps meeting at seven thirty here, and and I'll be attending that. But I'm going to just go around the room real quick. And if anybody's got anything to share, Lee? No, Laura?
I want the city to consider putting in some electric vehicle charging stations close to downtown. We've got the Tesla stations up at Marketplace. Not everybody can use those. I've got a new electric vehicle, and as we've gone across the state, we're spending a lot more time in the smaller towns. And we, we go and we say, is there a charge point charger here? And it's forty to sixty minutes. We go, we spend money in whatever town has it. So we stop and we go for a restaurant or we buy some stuff. And the infrastructure for charging stations is not going to keep up with the demand. The, the number of electric vehicles is going up really high. And I think it would be a good chance for us to, to get ahead of the game. Stout is putting in two charge point stations. Don't know when, but I think it would be a really good time for us to consider putting in two electric vehicle charging stations right near downtown.
I know we talked about that, and then the laws were changed and whatever, and it kind of puts us on a holding pattern. But I know we've, we've talked about that, and it is on a it is on a talking point. We're just waiting for the right opportunity to pull the plug. So but good idea. Thank you. Yes, Gordon Gretchen.
I guess theme and I just transportation as per usual. It is Stout's Car Free Week, Sustainability Week, and so walking, biking, and also this morning I attended a informational meeting for the passenger rail mission. And there, we're in phase one of four phases for having passenger rail here as well. And it's moving. So we should have phase one, which is scoping done in six months.
Good. Thanks for keeping track of that for us. Eric? Matthew?
Yeah, I just wanted to say kudos to the Menominee, excuse me, Menominee Area Chamber of Commerce and downtown Menominee for putting on two great events in the community. Recently, we had the Meet Menominee event through the Chamber of Commerce, went and saw that for a bit, good turnout with the Stout students there. And then downtown Menominee had the great community cookout that was well attended and had good turnout and good venue, good music, good food. So kudos to you guys.
That was a great event. I found my calling is in the dunking. So Jeff?
Yeah, I stopped by the library on the way down tonight to the meeting and watched that hardworking grounds poo at work. And they were just scurrying around property there, just doing an awesome job, getting rid of the weeds and of invasive, invasive vegetation. Also, it's really going to be busy this weekend in Menominee because it's also the Punky Mayor Challenger the Champions Race at the Rec Park on September twentieth and twenty first. So if you're into racing, get out there and enjoy.
Well, you know, I know that the Punky Mayor has been around a long time and, and Punky, you know, he was an amazing race person. The, the amount of money that it brings into Menominee, I wish somebody could hand, get a handle on that because when I see these people out for dinner and they're staying overnight in the motels and they're out and about, and I just wish that we had a dollar of value for all the money that comes in for such an event as that. And I know there's other events too in Menominee that all also offer those, you know, coming to Menominee and spending money and 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 all that. But it'd be interesting if we had a way to calculate that. And I know Ashley's back there at the chamber shaking her head. Yes. So.
Yeah, I was, I was going to chime in. The chamber has added some software technology that can at least help us understand how many visitors that are coming into a community for certain kind of events. So I I, I think we're, you know, kind of also going in on your talk or asking your question on return on investment, Matt. I think we're going to have a much better handle as to what kind of events are bringing in, how many people, what are the times, how does that impact our community? And I, I think that's going to be very very well utilized here in the future. So I got to hand it to the chamber. They've been doing an amazing job in downtown as well for bringing in events and people. So they're very excited for it.
I would kudo that. Kudos to the chamber. Ashley's done a bang up job down there with the chamber and she just keeps, you know, pushing forward. So thank you, Ashley. Back down here, Randy, do you have anything to add to that? No? Riley? Chad?
Isn't Elsworth Creamery have another ribbon cutting coming up here shortly, too?
They've got business after hours. Or what, what do they got? Okay. Okay, just so it's on the, on the microphone here, Elsworth Cheese Factory is having a twine cutting for the new statue of a cow on the twenty third. So everybody's invited out there at noon. So go on out to Elsworth Cheese Factory. I don't know what kind of cheese that cow gives, but it must be hard cheese. So, yeah, Chad.
But the cow that she's talking about was, the pipe was donated by Elsworth from leftover scraps. And they tig welded them all together in the shape of a cow.
Oh, interesting. So, wow. Good, good. I appreciate that. Mary? Ben? I don't got, I got, I said more than I should have. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to keep moving. Here we go. That brings us down to claims. If we want to pay the claims, we have to have a motion to do so. Updated claims list. Go ahead, Ryland.
I'll make a motion to pay the updated claims list as presented.
Okay, Mary?
I will second Ryland's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
That takes us into licenses. It's normal license list sent out earlier. Somebody like to make a motion to do so? We can do that at this time. Ryland?
I'll make a motion to approve the license list as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Laura? Go ahead, please.
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We need a motion to go into closed session this time, this evening. If somebody'd like to make that motion, Chad, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Is there a second to that motion, Jeff?
I'll second Chad's motion.
Roll call vote.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crow?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.